A meeting is now called to order. Roll call.
Here.
Here?
Here.
All right. Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge of Pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time to come together and make decisions for our community. We ask that you give us strength in our convictions, boldness in our decisions, and most of all, your wisdom in everything we do. We ask this in Jesus' glorious name. Amen.
Amen.
Approval of agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to move or?
I believe Susan wanted to speak right before.
D.
Before D.
So she wants to speak after the resolution for Commission Code of Conduct?
So I make a motion to change that. Let her speak before Resolution D.
Okay. Been moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Wizenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Okay. So approval of agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda for Bourbon County Commission Meeting, January 20, 2025.
Second.
Kruger?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Wizenhut?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes from January 13, 2025?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for January 13, 2025.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Wizenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Consent agenda. Approval of the 2024 Accounts Payable totaling $84,912.79.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, 2024 Accounts Payable totaling $84,912.79.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Wizenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Okay. Old business. Resolution for Rules of Decorm for Public Forums. Resolution for Meeting Rules of Order. Resolution for Commissioner's Code of Conduct.
I've read over them. I don't have any discussion.
Did we make a motion? Or we're just gonna have a discussion? I don't have anything wrong with any of them. We added prayer, did we not? I'd say like the Rules of Decorm for Public Forums, Meetings of Order, we could have probably just adopted Robert's Rule of Order. That seems to be the, what we learned at our meeting that most counties will follow anyway. And this is kind of close to it, so I don't have any issues.
Okay.
Do you want to take them all at one time? Do you want to do them individually?
Wait, not at the same time, I believe.
Yeah, we can make a motion to approve all three.
I make a motion that we approve Resolutions for Rules of Decorm for Public Forums, Resolutions for Meeting Rules of Order, Resolution for Commissioners' Code of Conduct.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded.
Kruger?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Wizenhut?
Yes.
Okay. Susan, you have the floor.
I just wanted to give some brief history of my position. I was, I'm gonna read this to keep emotions out of it and stick to facts, so please bear with me. I was hired in 2022 as full-time to assist department heads and elected officials on various issues for Bourbon County as CFO. And to be quite honest, after the first few months, I questioned why I would subject myself to the tension it caused. The reason is because I care. I've always been very servant-minded, whether it was helping someone in need or serving my community. I have worked very hard over the past two years to stay professional, even when being attacked by peers or the public. I have devoted 20 years to public service and plan to continue doing just that. I ran on transparency and respect, and I plan to continue those two traits. I would like to explain the projects I have been involved in over the past two years as CFO. In the first month I was here, we had to address several issues. FMLA non-compliance, we were not sending out letters and following up appropriately, causing the county to have some liability. Fair Label Standards Act, we were hiring employees and paying them as contract labor rather than running them through payroll. The 941s were not reconciled properly, causing IRS issues that we are still receiving penalties on. Reconciliation of benefits were not being completed to ensure that we were not overpaying premiums. Fixing benefits that should have been non-taxable to the employee. Taxable fringe benefits were not being handled correctly. Group term life was calculated incorrectly in the payroll system for many years, overtaxing employees. No one was responding to unemployment hearings in any place in the organization, which allowed employees that had been fired or terminated to be able to draw unemployment, causing our unemployment rates to go up. We had many times where budget laws were violated, cash basis laws were violated. Sales tax was being paid, and we're an exempt organization. During the course of time, I recovered $45,000 paid on utility bills. Not posting receipts timely, which means that we were understating cash on the general ledger. Monthly reconciliations were not posted timely, and there was a complete misunderstanding of K-MAG accounting, which is what we follow as in our organization. There was an understatement of expenditures because when they were posted, they were posted to revenue accounts. There was untimely processing of payables, causing penalties to be paid. Some were turned in late, some were due to the unwillingness to do payables more often. Nottimely filing of grant paperwork, causing us roughly to pay back $38,000 to the federal government. Through the past two years, additional items that I have helped the departments correct. I discovered errors in the Treasurer's Office of more than $500,000 of tax dollars that had not been distributed to taxing entities. The Treasurer was not appropriately disclosing all county bank accounts, and this was a violation of securities pledge laws during some months. Our NRP calculations were completed wrong. We ended up having to pay $30,000 in additional refunds to citizens that were due to them. We hadn't had a clean audit since 2017, and when I came in 2022, we had a clean audit. Currently, I've made the Treasurer aware that there is also a $380,000 distribution that has not been done in the Motor Vehicle Tax Fund, and now in my current position, I'm not able to assist with that. So that is something that will need to be done in the near future. Some may not understand after the last meeting why the schedules, salary schedules, were presented the way they were, and in hindsight, they probably needed more discussion. However, that was not my place. I did, however, explain to each Commissioner before they took office about the salary resolution, comparable counties' pay, and how these would be funded. $65,000 was budgeted for each elected official's position, and in simple terms, there's no longer a CFO position, so those funds were shared amongst the various increases in the general fund. However, during the budget sessions this past summer, a Commissioner agreed to fund every department as requested, except for the clerk. And $26,550 was moved from the clerk's budget to the Commissioner's budget, and the clerk was told that the new commission could move it back if they wanted. I'm asking these funds to move back to the clerk's budget. The extra $20,000 to get employees to the $70,000 that was requested would be funded through funding from employee benefits, as we've had extra savings due to all the changes that we made last year. There are several statements I would like to correct from last meeting, but that is a moot point, and it is time to move forward. I could share my opinion of what I think, of why I think this was done, but I choose to stick to the facts. At one time, Commissioner Beerbauer, you asked if I wanted to stay on as CFO. That is always what I wanted. But I knew through conversations outside of this room, that was not going to happen, and that is the reason I ran for clerk. Most of the duties I performed as CFO can still be done in the role as clerk, except assisting the Treasurer with oversight. This is why I chose to run for clerk and not Treasurer. The commission has the option to hire an outside firm to do the budget preparation and financial oversight, but that will cost you much more than $10,000. Our current auditor charges $185 per hour for services for like this. They also said they would charge $6,500 for budget preparation, which is, which is actually the responsibility of the commission. There have been statements made that many employees have not had raises in years. However, since I've been here, a 1% raise was given to all non-elected employees. Public Works employees have had several generous raises. Public Safety was given $50,000 in 2024 for raises. EMS was given $40,000 in 2024, and minimum wage was moved to $15 per hour for EMTs. Clerks in the courthouse were moved from a 35-hour work week to a 40-hour work week, and minimum wage was moved to $15 per hour. The Director of Public Works was given a $10,000 raise. Elected officials are the only individuals in this organization who have not had a raise since 2020. Another statement that is made is that I have said the county is broke. We are not broke. We have spent down $1.2 million in cash reserves by lowering taxes but never cutting spending. Cutting spending does not mean cutting, does mean cutting services, even though some do not believe this statement. I want to be a part of the solution to get the counting back on, county back on track. That is what I was hired to do, and that is what I will continue to do in the capacity. The question is, in what capacity does the commission want me to be in? That's my statement.
Okay. Except bringing us to revisit the salary schedule for appointed and elected officials. Commissioner Kruger?
First off, I would like to start by apologizing to the public. I believe that, and I'm only speaking for myself, that I acted a little hastily last week, and that I plan to try and rectify that mistake here today. I make a motion to repeal the raise increases from last week and open them back up for conversation.
I second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Wizenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes. Okay. I guess I can start the conversation here. After looking at everything and fielding many, many, many calls, emails, texts, I would like to see anybody that is not at the 58,600 mark be brought up to at least that, if not just a little bit of more of a bump to 60,000. So that way, if we, if that bill does pass, that we are ahead of the game and don't have to pay back wages. But as far as the raises for everyone else that we hold off for this year and revisit this every year going forward, that is just my thoughts, but we're open, I mean, this is open discussion, whatever you guys think.
Well, I mean, last week, I, that's what I was hoping, is that we would get to discussion. I did not, you know, see the revision part of the agenda until Friday because we were out of town, and so as far as my research goes into some of this, I did a little bit this weekend, and I just want to, in looking at the increases that were requested, I went back and, because it was said that the salary resolution for elected and appointed officials hadn't been passed for four or five years. And I actually found that in 2019, was the first year, that the $47,428, which I believe is the current salary for the county clerk, the county treasurer, and then registered deeds was, I believe, $44,821. And then that was brought up in 2021 for the registered deeds to the $47,000 mark, plus getting the extra duty of the road, or what was that?
Roads.
Road records officer. So there, so now, I mean, as far as I can figure, it's without being, having an opportunity to come in and see the, see the resolution book, that's where it's held at, and those, the previous commissions, they all had an opportunity to, to increase that each year. And had they, in looking at what would be a standard increase for those types of positions in the, in the corporate world, and I'm going off of several sites that dealt with corporate officers, and the average has been about 4% per year. So compounding that each year, they would probably be right around the 60,000 mark that you mentioned a while ago. But those commissions didn't do that, and for us to do it all in one year, I just still believe that without having a look at, and I appreciate that there was some other, you know, that some of the other positions in this county have gotten raises, but I'm not seeing any significant overall throughout the whole last four years, which is kind of what the benchmark that we've been looking at, 1% is, I believe, is what the clerk said a while ago. I would like to see a bigger study of that, and, you know, hopefully, we do a revision of payroll as a whole, but I would, I would say that, I mean, we should start now at the, you know, with the current, current wage and increase it by 4%, and that would be the first year, and you increase it. I mean, had they done that, they would be pretty close to the, to the other counties that we were, that we're comparing to, but they didn't do that, and so I say that we're correcting the problem, but we are correcting it probably in a more reasonable manner, and then move forward and up from there. So that's, that's what my, my point is. And then do we make a, I mean, one of the things I said or that I wish that we would have went into discussion on was in the extra duties, because I think the comment was made that there was an agreement on human resources, and then we also voted to make Commissioner Kruger the liaison to human resources, but never really discussed what that scope of that is, or what that means in, and when the clerk advised that you two had already agreed in this. Now, I'm not saying that there was any other, because we didn't sign, we didn't get sworn in until Monday, so, I mean, there was no violation of open meeting or anything like that. I'm not making any accusations there. I'm just saying I wasn't part of that discussion of human resources coming back, coming under our umbrella, and I don't, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm trying to figure out what scope, so whether or not we need to have a further discussion of those, of those deals and the duties. The only one that I see now, this whole list that is covered by state statute, is Motor Vehicles and Investment Officers to the Treasurer, which is even denoted here on this worksheet as KSA 8-145, and will not exceed $15,000 in additional. So I think as far as the election officer and budget and human resources, which is the other one on there, I think that warrants further discussion in this board, so.
I myself don't know the, all the functions of that. I just know that there was a reprimand that was going to take place, and they asked if one of us would set in on it, and that's the only duty that I know that went along with that. It was just to cover that for that day.
Okay. So I would, I mean, we can make this discussion now on these extra duties, or make that a separate motion and table it to another time? That would be up to you.
I don't think it needs to be a duty.
What?
Having the liaison for.
I don't know, just, I'm not just talking about that. I'm talking about the extra duties that were listed here, you know, that have compensation assigned to them. The road records officer, like I said, that, that, the registered deeds was raised in 2021 from $44,000 to $47,000 and assigned that duty. So I'm kind of looking at that, that they raised her from her base salary to compensate for the additional duties. So, I mean, that can be discussed. I mean, I think that warrants discussion. I think as far, you know, like with the election officer, and then here it says budget and human resources, and the comment was made that human resources come back to.
That's not what's on this resolution. The resolution says budget, payroll, and benefits. That's what their resolution was that was presented.
Yeah, that's the resolution you signed. Budget, payroll, and.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking at the, at the sheet that I got here. So budget, payroll, and benefits?
Benefits.
Okay. Well, so I still believe that they need to be discussed.
They do. I mean, I have put in calls, and most of the people that I talked with do pay that extra, and they're, you know, at least the ones that I spoke with are, say that it is.
So we're gonna have this, I mean, is this, is what we're gonna roll with as a discussion on these six? Now?
As long as you keep it professional and polite.
Well, I am. I'm just, I'm just saying is that we're talking about revisiting.
I think we should because, okay. I mean, payroll is an ongoing thing, and they need to know what they're gonna get paid for.
So, and again, motor vehicles and investment is covered by a KSA, is budget, payroll, and benefits as an extra duty to the clerk. Is that a KSA?
The clerk does not have to perform that duty.
Okay. And how long has the clerk's office performed that duty?
The payroll and benefits, actually, I was performing those duties for the last two years.
As CFO?
Yes. And the budget.
And was, prior to you, was it done by person in your position?
Yeah, and if you'll recall what I said.
Did they get extra money?
That I don't know. I don't, I can't answer that. I don't think so, but you understand everything that I listed off. Those, there were lots of problems in those areas. Why I was hired.
Haven't heard from you. What do you think?
I think we gotta look and see how much it would cost us if we, the clerk wasn't doing those. I mean, if she's asking for an extra $20,000, but she's doing $95,000 worth of work on top of regular clerk duties. Yeah. Well, I'm just, I'm bringing this, I mean, because it wasn't discussed, and budget, and all these positions were done by the, by the previous position, so for this board to, you know, hand it and give it to the clerk's office, then I think we need to discuss it. I'm just, that's just all I'm asking.
The discussion is fine, but what was the clerk doing? What was her previous clerk doing? What was her duties?
Jennifer?
Yes. And this is not a dig on anybody? This is.
She was not doing payroll, benefits, or the budget.
Okay, so she was doing the elections?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because the CFO, we had a CFO, that's why they weren't doing it. I mean, that, that is understandable. I'm saying now, we don't have a CFO, so these positions, this duty.
The only, the only elected official that can do those jobs on a day-to-day basis is the clerk.
Okay. That's, that's.
So, no, I'm sorry. So if we was paying, and Susan was doing it for the past two years, correct? Two years? At $95,000 plus her benefits, and then she's gonna continue to do those for 20?
About 10.
Or 10?
10.
10, sorry. $10,000.
We still need to discuss the other one, but we'll get finished with this one first.
Election?
Yeah.
It's been in there for years.
Yeah, well, but I have, I have, I have some points to make to that, but I want to finish with, with budget and payroll and benefits.
So I guess if you're, if the clerk doesn't do us and help us with it, then that's our job.
Right. Okay. Valid point.
We would have to decide, does the three of us have time to do that on a day-to-day basis? I mean, and that's just the budget and the budgeting, and I guess the HR and the, I'm not an HR person. Most people don't like me, so. So.
Okay.
I think in no world.
I don't see any other department that, that, that I would, that I would place it in, and I agree, I don't have time that I would want to dedicate to it, so I would say, okay. I mean, I was going off my sheet when, you know, and this is the previous one that was handed out, and I didn't see the updated where it was payroll and benefits, and what I had was budget and human resources, and human resources was passed off, so I'm like.
But that was not in the last agenda. That form was not in the last agenda.
I think in no world will you find someone to do them duties for that cheap without costing the county an extreme amount of money, and I am of the opinion that if these extra duties are mandated like I understand them to be, then they should be paid for these duties, in my opinion.
Okay. And then election officer, let's jump on over there. It says here, now, the $10,000 that's listed here, when I looked at the 2025 budget, the election, and it just says election, but it has a budget of $105,000.
Because you have to hire people to run your elections.
So the $50,000 that's for salary does not include this $10,000?
No. Oh, yes, yes. It includes the $10,000, but I have to hire people to run elections.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying.
And then our.
That $10,000 that's listed here is already budgeted in that 2025.
Some of that money is the contracted services we have for like the.
And that was.
The coding, the counting machines and stuff like that, correct?
And it went way up. It used to be, I'm gonna say like 20, and it's now 40 or 50,000.
So the $10,000 is just to pay her to be the chief election officer?
Right.
And then she has to decide who gets to work.
But I mean, that's out of the $50,000 that's in the salaries that's listed on that budget approved by the previous commission. Okay. That's, that was the only question I had regarding that, because I didn't think that this was, you know, here it made it look like there was, we were asking for an additional 10. So now I guess we had to decide.
All these extra duties are wrapped up into the budget, the extra budget that we have given them.
Okay. Now, I would say that we would need to decide what the salary is gonna be. Are we gonna go with the 70 that's indicated for, well, I guess the sheriff is listed at 70, registered deeds listed at. Registered deeds listed at sixty.
Sixty-five was approved in the budget, so that's just for your information.
So, okay, and hold on. Yes, Laura?
On the road records, when you're talking about gotta raise for that.
Twenty twenty-one?
I've never had. Lynn O'Hara said, by all means, she is doing all the road records, which, because I came in because my, somehow my salary, the base salary from the clerk and the treasurer's office had gotten a lot more than mine and I was questioning that and asking to be brought up. And then he mentioned the road records. So the road records is something totally different than my office.
What's wrong with me?
Is the public records on the counties around us and how they handle this? And will that give us a, a blueprint to look at and be able to help us to make decisions on this? I mean, it's, it's, it, it happens everywhere else, so you know what, you know what I'm saying? Use them as a blueprint and you don't have to match them perfectly to.
That's so, so at least I reached out to other commissioners at that training and asked them what their clerks get paid and what their registered deeds get paid. And when you look at our salaries over the last several years, we're thirty, forty thousand dollars behind some of those counties and some of those counties are half our size. So, um, I, I think bringing them up to what we're asking to bring them up to gets us right in line with other counties the same size or even some of them even smaller.
By showing that, that gives us something that then we can say, yeah, that's legit.
Um, so, uh, and I don't like to compare apples to oranges. That's just crazy, but, because every county is in its own situation. But if you want to have the best people at the job and ask them to come and work in the job, then you need to pay them the salary that demands the best out of them.
Don't take this on attack.
No, no, I'm sorry. If I sound rude, I apologize. That's not what I'm trying to do.
And that was provided at the last meeting. It wasn't provided to the public, but they did receive that of what comparable, of our size, our assessed valuation and population, um, what clerks, registered deeds and treasurers were making.
You want it? And again.
Then you can pass it around, yeah.
It's, it, when it comes to that salary, I mean, it was established, um, at forty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-eight, I believe is the current. Um, and I talked to some of the same, same commissioners. And, you know, for four years that it was under the previous commission, nobody raised them. I don't think they got a raise all four of those years, uh, with the exception of bringing the registered deeds from up to equal with the clerk, uh, and the treasurer. That being said, I mean, we, there is a, quite a discrepancy from, like you just said, but that same discrepancy falls even on the, the low level, uh, the lower levels of our, of our, of our company. And they haven't received those same, we're, we're way behind, we're way below. Uh, I believe deputies are not making what deputies in this surrounding areas are making, correctional officers aren't. Uh, I, I would imagine every department has, uh, some area that is, I mean, that their employees aren't equal to, to the areas around them. Uh, so are we gonna, are we gonna do the same for them this year?
I, I would, I would love to start giving.
Or, or can we just kind of gradually, you know, work our way up to it and then, you know, try to get it, you know, rather than do, you know, like I said, the average, if, if you went with the four percent, you would probably be pretty close to it by now, uh, to being equal with these other, these other counties around us. So let's say since they didn't do it, why, you know, we're gonna jump and give them anywhere from sixteen percent to twenty percent. Actually, the, the jump is even higher than that in percentage. But if we was just like, say, go five percent this year and then increase it next year and then hopefully be able to come up with, you know, some of the money that we're, we're, we're putting aside for this because, uh, what I understand, we're using some carryover money for this.
No, that's not true. I just explained it. I explained, we're using what was budgeted.
Okay, so budget for the CFO?
No, it was budgeted for these offices. Sixty-five thousand was budgeted for these offices. And the reason why you're able to do that is because CFO position was not budgeted.
Okay.
So those, all those increases that happened last year during the budget session got spread out. Everybody got an increase.
Okay.
I mean, there was a whole bunch of departments that got increases.
Okay, and then last week, when we were talking.
Yes, and I misspoke. And I misspoke. And as I said, I'd like to go back and make some changes.
You mentioned in your statement a while ago, the twenty-six thousand five hundred that, that the previous commission removed from the clerk's account.
Yes.
And put it in their account and that this commission could put it back.
That is correct.
We haven't discussed that yet either.
That is correct.
Uh, and then, so the forty thousand that IT had, does that play in this?
The forty what?
The forty thousand carryover from IT that was mentioned last week.
I explained everything of how these were going to be, what I just spoke about.
Okay, so.
Sixty-five thousand was budgeted for all the elected officials. Twenty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars was moved out of my budget. And Brandon, do you have the form that I presented during budget time that explained everything? I think I handed it to you earlier.
I don't know.
Um, and then there was, um, the extra twenty thousand for, to get it up to the seventy K could have come from employee benefits from all the savings that we did, but it doesn't have to. But the sixty-five thousand, and I will reiterate, the clerk's budget was the only budget that didn't get the raise.
Out of the sixty-five thousand?
No, yeah, out of, out of, out of the budget request.
So the, so the money that the other elected officials are getting is already was approved in the last budget. Really, the only thing she was asking for was her twenty-six thou, the clerk's twenty-six thousand dollars to be rolled over into her budget.
To be reinstated.
To be reinstated into her budget.
And your, Dave, in your, uh, your plan on the, on the, on the five percent, does that get them to that mark of the fifty-eight, six hundred?
I, I don't know. I'd have to do the math. I, I didn't do the math. I mean, what I did was, was I just, I went and done four percent just to show how much, had, had they been raised from twenty nineteen to now, what they would be making, uh, would be, um, I rounded it up to sixty thousand, so it would, it would be sixty thousand now based off of the, from twenty nineteen when they got the forty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollar.
But you're suggesting a four or five percent from what they're at right now? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And what would that, what would that figure be?
I don't know. You got a calculator?
We have them on our phones.
Mr. Graham?
I think Dave's got a solid idea. My question is if you bump four to five percent for the next four years, if it's supposed to be, I suspect they will still be X amount behind four years from now. And I don't, and I, I'm not disagreeing with David and I'm not disagreeing, I'm not disagreeing with either approach, but when I contacted these county clerks and got, I mean, you're starting from way behind.
Yes.
There's no good way to fix it and it sucks and it's a turd sandwich you inherited from previous commissions and not just one. But the first, there's just no good solution. Um, I did actually, if you looked at the comparisons that I did, I wondered why Cherokee County was basically as low as we are right now. And I found out from someone who used to live there and was very involved there. I guess they run budget free because they got some settlement from a casino company that was gonna put a casino there. So they have a seven and a half million dollar settlement that they got. And so they, they have zero debt. So he just said theirs behind as we are because they're even more dysfunctional than we are. Which makes sense because Alan, Bet, they're all a decent bit higher. I, I, you guys have no good, there's no fun options here, but I do worry that if you try to undo the what was done to you or you, what you inherited too slowly, that you're just gonna leave and that guy's four years from now in the same position, if that makes sense.
I understand what you're saying.
You're gonna have to find some meeting a little like this.
And I think what could be a shock is that they haven't, the last four years, they hadn't put a salary solution together. We just knew what we were making from what was approved at budget time. There was not a salary solution for the last, well, I know four years. I've been here twenty and, and I think Kendall or Joanne was the last one to do salary solution.
And, and I know that the county clerk, the county treasurer, the registered deeds and the sheriff all asked for sixty-five thousand dollars in the budget last year and it was approved, except for the clerks and money was taken from mine and moved to the commission.
Okay, you, you said sixty-five thousand each, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that was for what?
For our base.
For their salary?
For our base, yes, base salary.
Sorry. The twenty twenty-five budget approved by that commission, uh, went exceeded revenue neutral, correct?
Yes.
And so, uh, what's that due to the twenty twenty-six budget? When, if we, if we were to approve this, this resolution and that brings these salaries plus the, uh, extra duty assignments, that money comes up. I mean, that, does that reestablish the revenue neutral at today's rate, you know, at the, the, the rate now? I mean, the whole ideal is to try to get, for me anyway, is try to get taxes lower, not increase.
I agree.
And a reoccurring cost, uh, once like this is gonna increase.
But what has caused your reoccurring increases has not always been just an increase in these wages. It has been mainly insurance, when we get right down to it. It's liability insurance has gone up ten to fifteen percent. Your health insurance always goes up every single year and those have to be funded. The general fund, you could keep the same expenditures. A lot of things could happen in one year. Interest rates could go down and if they do, you're gonna automatically cut a lot of money out of the budget. You may have to riff some people, you may have to, so it just depends on each year. These amounts are, they were budgeted and your assessed valuation most likely will not go down. It will either stay the same or go up a little bit. You as a commission have the option to not take advantage of the increase in assessed valuation and that's what revenue neutral is.
Right, and we didn't, we didn't take advantage of it this year.
No, and you probably, there will be times that you may not be able to. And if you, if you have an increase in insurance, then you may have to decrease in another department if you want to stay at revenue neutral.
And what I'm worried about now is by increasing this and, uh, assuming the, uh, cost that it's gonna, because it's not just a one-time cost to bring it up to, to these wages, we're gonna have to incur this cost each year in our budget. And.
But it's, it's no different than what, it's the same amount that you've incurred every year.
We just increased it by sixty-five.
No, you didn't, because you're not paying ninety-five thousand for a CFO. You traded it.
I didn't trade it.
No, they did.
Yeah.
But that's what happened. I mean, that's the easiest way to put it.
Well, okay, I mean, I, I'm not seeing, I mean, let's take the, the, the clerk out of this and the treasurer, registered deeds and sheriff, them are three at sixty-five each. That's not ninety thousand. That's a hundred and eighty something.
No, 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 they were already making.
But they was already making sixty. Well, the registered deeds was only making forty-seven.
Yeah.
Treasurer was only making forty-seven. And, you know, I'm just saying is that instead of bumping one segment of our workforce to, to compensate for past errors by previous commissions and we have our workforce itself in the same boat, they haven't received these kind of raises. They're, they're below the, like counties, just the same as, as the top end of this and, you know.
Not as much as you think. There's a salary gap serving.
Let's, if we got a, if we got a, a cost analysis that says, just like you did here for, for the clerk and the treasurer and that, let's do the same there. Um, show that.
We'll have to pay about ten thousand dollars to do one.
How much did this cost?
I did it on my own. I called around.
Okay, and I believe the sheriff has called around for his deputies and the correctional officers?
Yeah.
I don't know if Eric has done it for the, for the public works, but.
I believe he's in the building.
I'm just, you know, they're in the same boat that, that, that the, these elected appointed positions are too. Uh, to say that they haven't and to say, because I know, and I had that conversation with him last week. There is, you know, during my campaign, there's twenty-eight-year veterans in this, in this county workforce that haven't, that are making a dollar more than the entry level. So to say that, that everybody has been treated equal by the previous commissions, it hasn't been done. And whether it belongs to the department heads or not, that, a lot of times they're, they're running, those department heads are running what these commissions have given them. And whether or not they get that kind of money to give those kind of raises or not, to, to make that equal. They didn't do it for the, the appointed position, so I don't think they did it for these, these department positions either. And I'm just saying is that rather than, you know, we, we, if we do it this year for this group, then next year we're gonna be in the same boat because I believe that we're gonna need to raise everybody else up to that, to, to levels that are equal to, to, to the work that they do and, and deserve. And we're, we're, we're gonna have to, we're, we're right again raising our rates and raising, raising taxes rather than trying to level it all out. But if we, if we do it responsible and say, you get a little bit this year and maybe we put a little bit of that money over for them and raise them up and then next year we raise them up. And I, to, not to, uh, totally disagree with what Mr. Graham said, yeah, by my assessments, if you give them, if you give four percent raises for corporate level positions like that, you would, we would be there now had they done that since twenty nineteen, but we didn't do it. So try to do it all in one year, uh, to me is just not.
I think that, uh, I think that we've had, we have inherited, um, from, uh, my listening to all the people that have spoken with me, we have inherited a broken system with lots of, lots of, lots of, lots of flaws, lots of errors. And it's up to us to start fixing those issues, the, you know, the best way we can with being fair to the employees and also being fair to the public. So, uh, um, we can talk about this till we're blue in the face, but I think we really need to decide on, uh, you know, what's fair and move forward. I mean, I get what you're saying. We can't fix it all in, in, in one day, but I think a little bit more than five percent is warranted, um, right now. That's just my opinion. We got a lot of work to do to get moved up to, you know, this century.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying is that I don't agree.
There's very few departments that have the ability to, um, use budget to give increases. The clerk, the treasurer and the registered deeds run, run on such a tight budget that they would never have been able to give themselves a raise or even their employees without coming to the commission and asking. However, you have the public works budgets, the, the sheriff's budget and the attorney's budget that they're big enough that they can give increases. Um, matter of fact, and one I forgot about is your county attorney gave themselves a thirty thousand dollar raise to, a year and a half ago.
And he is in an appointed elected position.
Yeah, he's an elected official.
Right.
Yes.
What he does with his budget after it's approved is, is, is on him and the public that votes him in.
But again, we're, our budgets are never big enough for us to even give a dollar raise. So there, that's why we come to you asking to respectfully, for our request. for our request to be fulfilled.
Okay. And how is it different for public works, which we control, the commission controls, that if he brings in a budget, says, I want to give all my guys a 5% raise across the board and they say, well, nope, your salary.
He doesn't come to you for raises.
They don't.
No.
And but their salary is approved by our budget.
Well, it hasn't been the last two years.
So when that line item on on the budget that says salary, public works, that these commissioners sign off on, they didn't.
The problem is, is with governmental accounting, and this is what you guys will learn over time, is they have a bottom line total. If they go over in one line item, they can make up for it in another. So his contractual could make up for his salaries. So there's a lot of leeway in those bigger budgets. That leeway is not in these smaller budgets. Am I correct, Laura?
Yes, mine's about 9,000 to run my office. Not including, obviously, not including.
And we are required by law to do lots of publications, which are very expensive. And so there's, we do everything we can. We we use used paper to for notes to lots of different things to try and cut costs. And so, you know, I feel like we addressed all this during budget in 2025 and I I respect what you guys are doing and I know you're getting a lot of pressure on this. I do, I understand that. And I know, I mean, I've been dragged through the mud on this, but I'm also standing up for what I think is right.
Okay, I respect that.
Now, I will say, something has to be decided tonight because we run payroll and I don't know what to pay people this week.
Well, I'm going to just throw my opinion out there. I expect you two, you two will probably do the same. As I stated before, people that aren't at the 58, 600 mark, I suggest that they either go to that, if not to 60,000, with the rest of the elected officials staying put for this year and we'll revisit everyone again next year.
Yeah, I have to clarify. You said, who who's going to the 60,000?
So that would be the register of deeds? She, because she, because the raise will be at 58, 6, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And she was the only one, was she the only one?
It'd be registered deeds, county treasurer and county clerk.
So it'd be three positions that are.
So.
Well, there's a lot of it, a lot of work and a lot of duties to to be had.
And then all the others, us sheriff and county attorney would stay?
I think.
Everyone else would stay.
The same.
Yeah. And pay the required extra duties. That's that's my opinion, but I would love to hear your, the, what you two think.
On the budget. I mean, payroll and benefits has been, I mean, I know you did it as a CFO, but that was something that was also previously belonged to the clerk's office, correct? Before you came over?
Yes.
Okay. So what does budget entail? I mean, what what as the clerk, not as the CFO, what you did for 90,000 a year, what are you gonna do for this commission for 10,000 a year?
Apparently the budget, the payroll and benefits.
I mean.
What's listed.
So what does that mean in budget?
Well, if you were to hire it outside, it's gonna cost you $6,500 from our auditor.
Okay, to do.
The budget.
The budget, 6,500.
It's not just enter a number, so.
Well, I under, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand, you know, what you did for 90,000, you're, you know, is this the same thing we're getting for 10?
To hire someone like.
Give me just a second, let me go run and show you what I had to do to get us in compliance.
I do know that from speaking with one of the past commissioners that when they were looking at hiring like Baker Tilly to do this type of work, it was gonna be $65,000 to hire them to do the duty.
Yeah.
So that's.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to seeing how much additional it would cost to go with what the sheriff has already been budgeted for, just just to have a fresh set of eyes looking at the budget.
It'd be $65,000 from what I understand.
Okay, I mean, that would be, I would not be opposed to doing that.
To get you in compliance, I had to do that many journal entries in the last two days. That's to get you in compliance with cash basis budget laws. Making sure that we're not violating any statutes. This is what was requested last year. So it just depends, would you like, I mean, continue to put you in compliance?
So just so everybody understands, if we're not in compliance, what happens?
You'll get written up in audits. And some are penal statutes that you can be charged with a fine. And I, that's what I handed out the last meeting was all the different compliance issues that you have to do and which ones were penal statutes. That's what, these are the audits. These are all the journal entries that had to be completed to get us in compliance. And we're still not in compliance, but we'll go over that the next, down later on in our financial review. Because there are some things that I can't do without commission approval.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm gonna jump out here a little bit and I don't, I don't have an issue with increasing it to 58, 6. And on the extra duties, I, as far as the one that treasurer has that is supported by KSA 8-145B, the election officer, as it is already budgeted in the 2025 budget.
It's been there for years.
Yeah, I understand. But it kind of made it look like this was separate from, you know, budget when you throw 10,000 on the sheet by itself.
It is, it is separate from budget, it's in a different fund.
Well, it shows salary on the on the budget form.
But it, but it's in a different fund, it's a different levied fund. And if you look at the election laws, you you have to fund the election officer's department
Right.
as requested.
Right.
And so that has always been there for year, I mean, for years. And I can give you all that, matter of fact, it's only.
I, I.
It's right here on the very back page. It tells you exactly.
Okay.
It's been there for years.
Okay. All I'm saying is is that I I don't, as budgeted, I don't, I don't have a say this year and maybe I'll have a better understanding by budget time this year. But when it comes to the other parts of this, I'm just gonna say that it still needs further discussion. While you were off getting that paperwork, we were having a discussion and I'm not opposed to, I mean, you said the auditor would be 6,500. It's not, I'm not saying that that's who I would want to look at, you know, want to do in my budget, but I would be willing to entertain looking and at others just to have fresh eyes looking on this budget after the last, not coming at anything from, but they dissolved the CFO position for whatever reason and now we're we're adding it to the clerk and this is your new position. And I would just say I would be willing to entertain looking at, having another set of eyes looking at it. And whether that be Baker Tilly or another group. So that's, that's my opinion.
What do you think, Brett?
I'm okay with the $60,000 salaries and giving them their extra money because I don't think we can find somebody to budget payroll and benefits for $10,000. I mean, there's three jobs that I don't want to touch. I don't, I don't like going through my own insurance, I like going through my own budget. And it's not a, I mean, we need to do the payroll and the benefits because it's gotta run every day and we have to start getting those checks rolled out this week. I mean, I I think the, I think if we do the $60,000 and and their extras for doing their extra work, that that gets them close to where they're at. And then over the next few weeks, we can dig into our budget and see where we can scrim and save and start giving the people that keep the county running, all the departments and get everybody up to the neighbors. I mean, I, there's, there's room somewhere, we just gotta figure out where we're wasting spending. I mean, we're government, there's lots of inefficiencies. But I think, I think paying somebody do three extra jobs for $10,000 is better than paying three different people to do three different jobs for 140,000. That's. I mean, so, and the $60,000 for the treasurer and the clerk, keep them above the the federal government's Department of Labor and we do the 58, 6 for the deeds. And then, so that, I mean, where that salary should go in at that? I mean, that puts us. That puts us pretty close, just for the salary. I mean, that's. So, I mean, that's where I'm at.
Well, I'll start off, I'll make the first motion and I'll, I motion that we set the salaries for the county clerk, county treasurer and register of deeds at 58,600 and that the county sheriff, county attorney and county commissioners salary stays the same. I motion that we accept the motor vehicle investment officer extra duty at 10,000, the, for the treasurer's office. I motion that we, the register of deeds receives the 5,000 for road record officer. The county clerk received 10,000 for election officer and I believe that I would like to see motion for an adjustment rate of 6,000 for payroll and benefits and that we table budget to be discussed at a later date. That's my motion.
I'll motion, will you have a second?
I just have one question before I give my answer. The deduction down to 6,000, as I understand it, and if I'm wrong, somebody please correct me, but that is, that is a mandated amount. Am I right or wrong in that assessment?
One, what?
For the, for the budget payroll and benefits?
Yes, that it is a $10,000 mandated item, is that correct or incorrect?
That is incorrect, but I do not have to do the, any of those duties statutorily.
The 10,000 for the election office is mandated for statute.
Yeah, the election one is, yeah.
But the other three are not?
So I know going forward with your comments, Susan, is, are you saying you wouldn't do it for 6,000?
Two of them, benefits and payroll. I tried to break it down, I mean, you know, three, three functions divided by into 10, I mean, you know, the number is gonna be weird.
I understand, I'm just asking questions so I can.
I'm just saying that we table budget until we have a further discussion and see if we want to do something else or continue down this road. I'm just, I I'm kind of looking at the ideal that maybe fresh set of eyes on 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 the budget as a whole is, that's just my opinion.
We can do that through an audit anytime.
Well, I'm not talking just. It gets audited every year, so.
The budget includes any kind of financial review, so I would not be doing that for you. So you'll have to do that every, every month.
And the.
On your own.
And then it would cost us 6,500 just to have the auditors do the budget, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'd just say, I mean, what I'm kind of getting at here is that I'm not looking at it, you know, on the budget side of it, I'm not looking at how much, you know, what it's gonna cost in the long run or in the short run. What I'm looking at, why I wanna, I would say would be having a fresh set of eyes look at it and 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 that is that, you know, for four years, they went from 1.2 million to to 400,000 and, I mean, it's that no fault of the people that that were doing the paperwork, but it surely is the fault of the guys that make the decision.
And they were warned multiple times.
And that we got there. And as you said earlier, you know, about, well, I can't, I lost my train of thought. But anyway, I just think that having somebody else look at it and just see, well, you was talking about waste, that's what I was, I was gonna get at, being able to look at where we got waste and stuff like that, I think somebody that that hasn't been here and can look at it from a fresh perspective would be worth the cost.
I'm going to, since we didn't get a second, I'm going to make the motion that we do as you planned, but pay the 10,000 instead of the 6,000 and then we can discuss your idea further as well. So that's my, that's my motion.
58, 6?
I'm, I'm sticking to my original motion of of the 60,000 for all those that are not up to at least the 58, 6 and pay the extra duties at what is posted posted on the sheet and then discuss further as you suggested. That's my motion.
I'm doing math, hold on.
Okay.
I got a lot of scribbles on my paper. I hope you didn't want this back.
I'll second it.
Bear Bear?
No.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
I will bring you a new sour rail solution in a little bit if you'll take a break.
I'm going to slide these to you. These were those.
I'm going to make a motion. We take a five-minute break.
I second.
Any more discussion about taking a five-minute break?
No.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's go. Let's go.
They got to come back. I don't want to have to go. Yeah, I know she said that. She actually did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
She's sending her request to the board. I don't want to talk to her because I don't care about her. I was like, it's just a little bit dangerous.
I could just see Jimmy going through the glass.
I'm not a lot.
One of the new public workers, when I went to that deal last week in shelter, they don't really pay. And they have an intern. The intern was, for the last two years, has been an intern. So somebody said something, and it says, well, they only made me a half of a day. And she goes, well, come on, fine. I was like, no. We're joking.
Do anybody that hasn't signed this for attendance?
There might be some people.
Would you go find out, please? Would you find out? Yeah. I just need to know who's in attendance. Hi, baby.
When we get done with my little deal, I'll go out and do it for you. It's like I told Shannon, darn Susan, she could have put me in front of that.
There's a group out there.
I had fun sitting down. I'll take you out. What's this? Oh, this is the minutes.
Resolution for floodplain management revision, regulations, public hearing held on 1/13/25.
I think I got it.
Did you guys get a chance to look it over?
Yeah, I read it.
Any questions or anything for me?
Can't you make it any smaller?
Sure.
But no, I have no questions.
Oh, to approve floodplain resolution? Make a motion to approve the resolution for floodplain management revision, regulations.
I second.
I mean, that's. I mean, that's where I'm at. So. I mean, that's where I'm at.
Well, I'll start off. I'll make the first motion. And I motioned that we set the salaries for the county clerk, county treasurer, and registered deeds at 58,600. And that the county sheriff, county attorney, and county commissioners' salaries stay the same. I motioned that we accept the motor vehicle investment officer extra duty at 10,000 for the treasurer's office. I motioned that we, the registered deeds receives the 5,000 for road record officer. The county clerk received 10,000 for election officer. And I believe that I would like to see motion for an adjustment rate of 6,000 for payroll and benefits and that we table budget to be discussed at a later date. That's my motion.
I'll motion. Do we have a second?
I just have one question before I give my answer. The deduction down to 6,000, as I understand it, and if I'm wrong, somebody please correct me, but that is a mandated amount. Am I right or wrong in that assessment?
What?
For the budget payroll and benefits?
Yes, that it is a $10,000 mandated item. Is that correct or incorrect?
No, that is incorrect, but I do not have to do any of those duties statutorily.
The 10,000 for the election office is mandated.
Yeah, the election one is, yeah.
But the other three are not?
So I know going forward with your comments, Susan, are you saying you wouldn't do it for 6,000?
Two of them, benefits and payroll. I tried to break it down. I mean, you know, three functions divided by into 10. I mean, the number is going to be weird.
I understand. I'm just asking questions so I can.
I'm just saying that we table budget until we have a further discussion and see if we want to do something else or continue down this road. I'm just, I'm kind of looking at the idea that maybe fresh set of eyes on the budget as a whole is, that's just my opinion.
We can do that through an audit anytime.
Well, I'm not talking just, it gets audited every year, so.
The budget includes any kind of financial review, so I would not be doing that for you. So you'll have to do that every, every month on your own.
And then it would cost us 6,500 just to have the auditors do the budget, right?
Mm-hmm.
I'd just say, I mean, what I'm kind of getting at here is that I'm not looking at it, you know, on the budget side of it, I'm not looking at how much, you know, what it's going to cost in the long run or in the short run. What I'm looking at, why I want to, I would say would be having a fresh set of eyes look at it. And that is that, you know, for four years, they went from 1.2 million to 400,000. And I mean, it's that no fault of the people that were doing the paperwork, but it surely is the fault of the guys that make the decision.
And they were warned multiple times.
And that we got there. And as you said earlier, you know, about, well, I can't, I lost my train of thought. But anyway, I just think that having somebody else look at it and just see, well, you was talking about waste. That's what I was going to get at. Being able to look at where we got waste and stuff like that, I think somebody that hasn't been here and can look at it from a fresh perspective would be worth the cost.
I'm going to, since we didn't get a second, I'm going to make the motion that we do as you planned, but pay the 10,000 instead of the 6,000. And then we can discuss your idea further as well. So that's my, that's my motion.
58.6?
I'm sticking to my original motion of the 60,000 for all those that are not up to at least the 58.6 and pay the extra duties at what is posted on the sheet. And then discuss further as you suggested. That's my motion.
I'm doing math. Hold on.
Okay.
You've got a lot of scribbles on my paper. I hope you didn't want this back. I'll second it. Bear Bear?
No.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to slide these to you. These were those.
Take a five-minute break.
I'm going to make a motion. We take a five-minute break.
I second.
Any more discussion about taking a five-minute break?
No.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion. We take a five-minute break. I second.
Any more discussion about taking a five-minute break?
No.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Yes. I'll make fun of you if you feel bad.
There's a blue thingy covering.
Let's go. Let's go.
They got to come back. I don't want to have to go.
Yeah, I know she said that. She actually did. Thank you.
You're welcome.
She's sending her request to the board.
I don't want to talk to her because I don't care about her.
It's just a little bit dangerous.
A little bit dangerous.
I could just see Jimmy going through the glass.
I'm not a lot.
One of the new public workers, when I went to that deal last week in shelter, they don't really pay. And they have an intern. The intern was, for the last two years, has been an intern. So somebody said something, and it says, well, they only made me a half of a day. And she goes, well, come on, fine. I was like, no. We're joking.
Do anybody that hasn't signed this for attendance?
There might be some people.
Would you go find out, please? Would you find out? Yeah. I just need to know who's in attendance. Hi, baby.
When we get done with my little deal, I'll go out and do it for you. It's like I told Shannon, darn Susan, she could have put me in front of that.
There's a group out there.
I'm not.
I had fun sitting down. I'll take you out.
What's this?
Okay.
Oh, this is the minutes.
Yeah.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
So, resolution 07-25, and that's the 21th commercial solar energy project.
Meeting back to order?
Huh?
We need to call the meeting back to order?
No, we need to fish the topic.
Okay.
Approved on 1/13/25. Corrections completed for signature. And that's what we're signing. What's up with 13, you got, David?
Is that what's already?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Is that what already has been passed through?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that was the salary thing.
Where do you get Mr. Floodplane Resolution?
I would like to.
Oh, yes, she, yes, right here. Resolutions for floodplain management revision, regulations, public hearing held on 1/13/25.
I think I got it. I bet. Did you guys get a chance to look it over?
Yeah, I read it.
Any questions or anything for me?
Uh-uh.
Can't you make it any smaller?
Sure.
But no, I have no questions.
I'm good. Okay. Use motion four. Oh, to approve floodplain resolution? Ah, make a motion to approve the resolution for floodplain management revision, regulations.
I second.
Kruger?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, guys. I'll get it to the state tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, sir. I got to sign this and put my hand on it. I was going to set a date for the work session for public works here.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that in lieu of a work session, that I meet with Eric and his staff and we go over the emergency road plans and come up with another couple of ideals and then bring them back to the board for discussion.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
All right, any thoughts?
I'm good with whatever. It's pretty cut and dried. I mean, storm comes in, we have all kinds of storms.
I mean, as far as what roads you guys hit and that type of stuff, because there was question last week on that.
Last week's question, I did check with the sheriff's department and there was no call into the sheriff's department, but I believe after they'd done some digging, that maybe the fire department and ambulance was called out, but the whole time, nobody ever notified.
Oh, well, I was on that hill the other day. And I mean, you know, there might be some, some need to.
But my thought on that is if we know it's dangerous and then say, please, please, please notify us immediately so we can come out and address the situation, either blade it off, put material on it, whatever we need to do, wherever that location would be, so.
Anyway, still.
I'll second it. Sorry.
I mean, that's just fine. I mean, I just figured to save us time, it would be easier.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine with me. I don't have a problem with that. So I'll second David's motion to just go out and have a conversation with Eric and his guys.
Bear Bear?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments for items not on the agenda. JD Handley.
Evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
JD Handley.
Before I get started, I want to say, don't ever think the small stuff isn't noticed. The fact that you gentlemen take your hats off during this meeting and sit up straight in your chairs and not click your ink pens is much appreciated. Brings a little bit of professionalism back to this table that I think we all want to see. Not much of a public speaker, I'll have to admit that. I put my thoughts and feelings on paper tonight. Otherwise, I can be a little salty. There is one person at this table that got a higher grade for public speaking in high school. I'm not going to mention her name, but bear with me as I read through this, if you would. I, a couple of disclaimers. I am the Osage County, Osage Township trustee. I will be available for autographs afterwards for that position, but I am not here tonight representing Osage Township. I'm also the Culver Crus supervisor for Bourbon County Public Works, and I'm not here in any way, shape, or form representing public work. Wanted to speak last week, but I seen there was a ton of names on the paper. I didn't realize it was a sign-in sheet. I thought it was public comments, so I skipped it in effort to, right, effort to speed your meeting along. Any rate, last week, when I seen you all walk in this room and sat down at this table, it was a huge breath of fresh air. I hope that you all understand the amount of hope and optimism that this community has in you. We're hurt, we're angry, we're disappointed, and we're looking to you to make it better. I'd like to believe that I speak for more than just myself when I say we're tired of the dysfunction, we're tired of the drama, we're tired of the negativity, we're tired of the lack of transparency, and we're tired of the self-serving agendas that have come from this very political body. This brings me to my first point. I believe each and every elected official has the opportunity to decide if you want to be a politician or a public servant. This isn't a decision that you make just once and you're done. This job will be part of your daily life. So I would encourage you to ask yourself every morning when you wake up, am I going to be a politician or am I going to be a public servant? I would also encourage you to ask yourself before making every decision that you are faced with at this table, am I about to make, is this decision I'm about to make going to make me a public servant or a politician? Is this decision going to benefit to the best interest of the citizens of Bourbon County? It is my belief that the citizens of this county are tired of politicians. I think the results of the last primary election and the fact that you are sitting at this table confirms that belief. Last week, you all spoke of visions. Visions are great. Visions are basically goals. And goals are very important. However, what is more important than goals and visions is purpose. You must have a purpose. I would encourage you all, if you have not already, to establish your purpose as being our public servant. And as a public servant, I would ask that your primary goals, one of your primary goals, if not the primary goal, is to bring unity back to this community. This community has been plagued with a lack of unity for years. Honestly, Bourbon County doesn't need any enemies. We already have enough right here. Oftentimes, the way we treat one another reminds me of a chicken house full of roosters, constantly fighting and tearing one another apart. I understand that each of you can only do so much individually. However, individually, you come to this table and you become our leaders. And I am a firm believer that leaders should lead by example.
I'm back today as a taxpayer, just a concerned citizen to speak about the first of those things. Over the last week or so, rumors were brought to my attention of a new position being brought into the sheriff's office. I was told we're hiring a sheriff's advisor now. I don't know if that's true. I haven't had a chance to talk to Bill. This was concerning to hear from me, though. I know we have several unfilled positions that are, and several positions that are just grossly underpaid. It's almost criminal to me. So wanted to look into it. I filed a court request in regards to it and I wanted to come talk today, pass this out to you guys, just what I'm going off of. You'll see my request pertains to the job positions, the sheriff's office and jail, and the pay associated with those. I'd like to draw attention to a new position that was hired on January 20th and its associated pay at $21 an hour. If what I'm hearing is true, this is the person that's been hired as the sheriff's advisor. This new position, along with the recent request for additional funding to hire a financial advisor, brings me a lot of concern and several questions I'd like to pose to the commission and the sheriff. I'll preface this by saying, I don't intend these to be a tax to anybody. That being said, I feel like it warrants answers. I'd first like to ask if it's true that this new position's role is going to be as an advisor to the sheriff? If not, what is the role and is it full or part-time? Bill wants to step in, more than welcome to, it's not going to hurt my feelings. You'll see, it's under last of more, or sorry, not more, Murphy. It's there on the back of the first page. Like I said, my question would be, is it true? I mean, is this a sheriff's advisor position? What's the function? Yeah, or I guess.
Yes, yes, sir. Let me see what you're reading.
Mr. Murphy.
Oh, yeah, okay. Question one, I do have the authority under the back, the budget that's been established that I can give my employees pay raises I see fit. Is that correct? Everybody does agree then, correct? Okay. Brian Murphy is the former sheriff of Allen County. Brian Murphy comes to this office with over 30,000, I'm sorry, 30 years of experience. Sheriff Murphy knows how to handle commissioners, knows how to deal with the public, knows how to deal with budgets, and knows how to deal with personnel. There is nothing wrong, nothing wrong for somebody to come in and to assist. It doesn't say that I'm failing. It just says, let's see if we can do this a little bit better. And there's nothing wrong with that. For people from the national level to the state level, how many advisors do they have or their elected officials? I ask you, think about it. I'm just letting them think about it for a second. So that is my choice. Plus, on top of that, we have an open position. We have several open positions. Correct?
Yep.
And guess what? He's a person that's still going to take calls. He's going to be out there on the road. And I really would appreciate the next time you could come to me, since I have an open door policy, and discuss it with me in person, in private. But instead, you want to come through here publicly. And so I'm just very disappointed.
That's okay. Like I said.
So is there any other questions?
Yep. So his role's advisor. He's going to fill the road, cover the road. Okay. Is it full or part-time?
Full-time.
Okay. So my next question, and again, I'm not intending this to come off as an attack, but you've been sheriff for 10 years here, since 2013, correct?
There's a point in 14, but okay, elected, but go ahead.
So been doing this for how many, 20-plus years, I mean, at least, at least. We got to look at our spending. Why, you know, if that's a full-time position at 21 bucks an hour, that paired with this financial advisor, we're looking at around 80K. Why are we spending that money? You've got deputies that are grossly underpaid. And we, when, I know my time there, all I ever heard was, we don't have money for raises. We don't have money for raises. If we've got money for these things, why do we not have money for the guys at the bottom?
We have certain money and it was tonight, it was just said that I can just give a raise whenever I see fit. With that being said, I made a decision with the undersheriff that when I get back, there's going to be pay raises. Is it going to be a 21? No. But as mentioned earlier, if I go over budget because of wages and salaries, I'm not responsible for it. Somebody else is. Who's going to take responsibility for it? Because there is no discussion for the 2025 budget for me. None, zero. The discussion happened between two people and two people only. And those two people was not me. Two other county officials. So, number one, he's advisor, and he's going to help, and he's going to take calls. 30-plus years of experience, I'm going to recognize for that pay or for that years of a service, wouldn't you? Somebody that has over 30 to 35 years of experience, I'm going to identify and recognize his service, just like me. Do you bet I got stuck at 60,000 tonight, but hey. That's just how it is. But I'm still going to keep my head up. I'm proud of what I do and I'm going to roll on. So next time, if you have a question, please come to me, discuss it with me. And if you don't like it, you're more than happy to come up here and discuss it in a good meeting.
I felt like this was the venue because we're just, the whole meeting's been about pay and been about where can we cut spending? So like I said, that, that's my question. We got guys, we got the guys at the bottom scraping by. You're capable, Bill. You know what you're doing. You've been doing it for years.
We're not here talking about, you're talking about your question. I don't need you to talk about me.
You know, so my next question, and we've discussed a little bit of it. My understanding that puts us at a chief deputy, an undersheriff, sheriff, and now a sheriff's advisor. We still only have eight road deputies and two detectives?
I believe so, yes.
So we've got 10 people and four advisors.
But it doesn't matter if it's their advisors or their deputies. They're out taking calls. They're still serving the community. What difference does it make what title I give them? I can give them the title of Mickey Mouse if I want to.
I'm just asking.
But they're still an employee. It's a living, breathing person that's there taking calls. It's a person that's not going to sit in the office and twill his thumb. He will be with me for about four weeks to make sure he's familiar with our records management system, how familiar with our county, where everything's located at, and then after that, he's on his own, just like anybody else that comes to me. Sheriff, let's look at this. Okay. But like I said, with him having over 30,000, and I'm going to repeat myself again, and with me over 30,000, that's 60,000 experience dealing with the public, budgets, commissioners, and employees. And I said, everybody from the national level to the state level to 500 companies, all have advisors that usually come in and help them make sure that they're going down the right direction. And there's nothing wrong with that. Nothing.
That's.
You agree with that, correct?
That's why I'm asking. Because I, I think in the time, in the state of things we are in the county, I agree, people need, the advisement may be needed, but is this the time and the place for the 80,000?
So now I can ask you this. Now you know what I go through when I sit here and try to do the budgets, when I try to explain to you as a deputy, when you're patrol.
You're correct.
What are the headaches that I have to go through? Is there any other questions I can answer for you? Anything else for the commission? Anybody else from the public would be more happy to.
Just 60 years, not 60,000.
Yeah, 60 years, total experience. Anything else? Seriously, I'm here to ask. I'm transparent. My door is always open. If you don't like what I'm doing, come see me. If you don't like my answer, this is the place to bring it. I've said that numerous times, numerous times.
Hey, Bill, I do have a question. Do you have a set, and do you have a set salary base for your deputies?
They're in steps.
Where they stop, top out?
It's a step.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Ross?
Nope, that's what I've got tonight, gentlemen. I just wanted to bring that concern up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Graham, leadership.
I like your note. I like your management.
This was for a meeting this morning. I'll ad lib here and say that I would have seconded and voted for your motion. I would have seconded and voted for your motion, so I'll, I'll take the heat for either one of you, if any of you get it. This will be my last time speaking to you guys like this for a spell. In my political life, I have been at the mercy of folks who just loved hearing the sound of their own voice, meeting after meeting, year after year, and I will not subject you to that torment. I just wanted to say, this seems more prescient now, I just wanted to say that I know this hasn't exactly been the best first week for a new county commission in Bourbon County history, but I believe I'm one of a great many taxpayers who are glad you were here. And I hope you take this last week as a learning experience and keep moving forward. I've been in local politics for exactly 20 years now, and I truly believe that you represent the first county commission in that time where every member is sitting at this table for the right reasons. Not for extra income, not for health insurance, not to use it as an ego trip or a bully pulpit, and not to use it to find ways to benefit yourselves and your buddies on the taxpayer dime. We've had plenty of those in the last two decades, and your willingness to make, take a thankless, low-paying job because we, the people, needed you is a testament to your heart of service. You will make mistakes, but no mistakes are unfixable. You will take a lot of slings and arrows on social media, but keep in mind that 99% of those slings and arrows are from people who never darken the door of a commission meeting, much less run for office. You will spend all your time here, often caught in the middle of battles between lots of different folks with lots of different agendas, but keep your eyes and hearts on what's best for all of Bourbon County and you'll rarely go wrong. You guys represent a breath of fresh air for Bourbon County. To most of us, that's long overdue, but to others, it's a threat. Some of the decisions you make over the next two years, four years, will affect Bourbon County for generations to come. No pressure, though. But I have faith, the three of you have the character and the fortitude to tackle those decisions head-on. So I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Nick. Okay, Brad Matkin.
He's out in the hallway.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Didn't think this time would ever come, but here it is. I had a couple of these out. I can get them out. There's three. Good evening, I am Brad Matkin, city manager, city of Fort Scott. I want to invite the commissioners, county clerk, county appraiser, and whoever else you see fit to a combined county-city work session on Thursday, February 6, 2025. Start time would be 5:30. It'll be in Memorial Hall. The city of Fort Scott, our staff will provide supper, also drinks. Agenda, you'll see the agenda on there. Like to keep it around an hour, hour and a half. The public is welcome to come. We'll have it on live stream, Facebook. Reason for this, I feel it's something we've got to do. As Fort Scott being the biggest city in your county, we've got to be on the same page. You've got to know what we're doing. We've got to know what you guys are doing. We have done this in the past, but it has failed to work because of egos. It won't do that again. I can, I can tell you right now. So hopefully, everybody can attend. I look forward to it. You've got the agenda. Think about the agenda. If you need to ask questions, please get with me. I will post this on Facebook so citizens can see the agenda so they can be ready to ask questions, too. But I second what the gentleman said at first. I appreciate you guys doing this. Open door. You need anything from me, you ask me. Do not use the rumor mill. Rumor will, and mill will kill you, and it'll kill relationships. Rumor mill and Facebook, okay? Facebook can be good, but can be evil. If you use Facebook to determine your way of managing here, it's not going to be good. Okay? That's all I ask, because I've heard my name mentioned in the past of rumors. We don't use rumors. Pretty straight up, straight forward. So, any questions, comments?
I'm good.
All right. Hey, appreciate y'all. I'm going home and watch football game.
Thanks for coming, Brad.
Roxy, Greg, and Shayla Snyder.
Hello, I'm Shayla Snyder.
Hello.
Nice to meet you all. I've seen your guys' faces before, so it's nice to see you. So I am, we do have two new commissioners, okay? I would like to bring up the Pike Lake Reservoir. We have given you landowner petitions as well as general petitions against Pike's Reservoir, and it is a very unpopular idea with the people. We would like to know where you, our commissioners, on staying on the Pike's Lakes Reservoir project. Are you for doing this or are you against it?
I'll, I'll go first, I guess. So the edge of that lake or reservoir or watershed or whatever you want to call it, would be less than a mile from my house. So I do not want, I mean, call me old-fashioned, but I don't want my taxes going up, right? So I, I think that the way it was sold was not needed. So I am 150% against the Pike Lake, Pike Reservoir project or whatever you want to call it. It's not. So, I mean, that would affect my neighbors, so I'll do everything I can to make sure it doesn't come back.
And the rest of you?
I don't know enough about it to speak on it, to be honest with you.
My turn. When it first came out, I, I think I got well behind. I got a T-shirt, by the way. I got well behind the, the No Lake, and for, the reason is they, the whole thing started in shambles from the beginning because it was not done in due process and in a manner that should. The landowners that were going to be affected was never notified ahead of time that I, that I'm, the way I'm reading it. And, and the big thing was that it has a cemetery. And I'm pretty big on that type of how we honor our, our people. And I understand that there might even be a Civil War tombstone in that cemetery as well. And so just in general, and I follow the bills. I mean, I followed that one until it died in committee. And then even after that, to make sure that they weren't going to bring it back into session. And then now the current bill, I believe it's 21, is it?
12.
12, 12. We got the numbers mixed around. And I think Mr. Schallenberger is kind of, that, that kind of helps this cause, I think. And I would be, I mean, the initial request from this group was for us to adopt, I believe it was Coffee County did the an eminent domain resolution that, that was an exemption to the state deal. And they're pretty lengthy and in the process of doing so, but I would not be opposed to bring that up at a later date and pursuing that, just to support that, because I don't believe that, that we should. I, I believe in, in, in property rights for, for the property owners, but also, I mean, in the same token, because before the solar people come after me, I believe in due process and, you know, being good to your neighbors, too. So, yeah, I'm against it.
Well, from me to all the other people that live around there, we appreciate that. And you may not be a commissioner, ma'am. I would like your opinion on this, too, if you know anything.
I really don't have an opinion on it.
All right. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hoyt, you're next.
First, I'd like the podium back, please. Because I feel like I have my back to the room and being from an Italian neighborhood, it's kind of awkward.
I like looking at you in the eye.
I like looking at you in the eye.
Since you all have mentioned the meeting that we attended, I want to make a full disclosure that I paid my own way. I did not attend on anybody else's dime. But the best, we got a lot of good information out of that meeting, not only from the presentations, but I think a really good information collaborating with the other commissioners from different counties. And I want to use Potawatomi County as an example. We, and I think we were all three sitting at the table when I asked them this question, "You just went from three to five commissioners, how did that work for you?" And their initial reaction was, "Well, we weren't sure, but now that we're there, we like it." And later on in this, in the days that we were there, I think I mentioned this to David, that, sorry, Commissioner Beerbauer, that one of the commissioners from Potawatomi brought the map that they had drawn, and they have one huge District 1, and a whole bunch of little Districts 3, 4, and 5, but that's the way their population divided up. And that's about what ours did as well. We, do we have the maps officially yet? Shane?
Yeah.
I mean, do we have them published in lat longs and all that? Well, you were, you were supposed to get something, and this is what you told me Tuesday. You were waiting for something from Sam, so that you could publish-
They're writing, they're writing.
Okay.
So as soon as we have them, then they will have to vote on the legal descriptions. Wednesday, we're going to Topeka to meet with the governor, who's our chair of state, and the KAC attorney to see if we can do a special election.
Okay, I'll get to that. I'll get to that. But we need to get those maps done, and if you still have to vote on them-
No, the maps are done, that's what you're not on.
Okay. No, what I'm understanding is you said we needed to get legal descriptions, and they had-
They already voted on the maps. The maps are approved, legal descriptions are being written.
So we don't have to do any more voting on maps?
No.
Okay. So what I'm suggesting is, as he mentioned, there was, and I've talked to Jay Hall myself, he said he has heard of an invitation to Senator Schallenberger to have a discussion on this, but he really wasn't sure that he was going to accept that, and I don't know what you intend to accomplish there, but I think instead of asking for permission to have a special election, let's just ask for forgiveness once we do it. And set forth resolutions. Keep in mind, if we have a, if we go the state line, which the state line's going to tell you to have a June 1 cutoff for, for filings, an August primary if necessary, and a November election, keep in mind, we're now going to mix a partisan position with nonpartisan elections that will be due in this election cycle. City, school districts, college are all going to be mixed with these two commissioners, and they're not partisan. So I think that makes all the sense in the world why we should divide this up, set a date for, and get the Republican chairman, part, Republican Party Chairman onboard to solicit people, parties of, persons of interest, along with the Democrats. Let's get some people, and let's have a vote. It was overwhelmingly approved by the citizens of this county in November to go from three to five commissioners, and it's time to act on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Owensby?
Mr. and Lady Mr. Gray covered everything that I had probably been bringing up. One thing I would bring up is being able to do the vote, and then Mr. Voice talking about the way it's supposed to be done correctly.
It's not in my work to do it like special election.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Well, I would say if we have people going to Topeka to have that meeting, we will see what they come back with, and see what they tell us. No, we don't need a fine, we don't need, I mean, it's, you know. All right. New business. So, Executive Session, KSA 75-4319B3. B3 is to discuss matters relating to employer-employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with the representatives of the body or agency. And this is for County Councilor Candidate Matthew Bonner.
Is he in the hallway?
Is he in here? Is he still here?
Oh, there he is.
Um, how, how much time do you need? How much time do you guys need to ask him questions?
10 minutes.
Start with, how much time do you need?
I'm good with 20, 30 minutes, if that, if we need that work.
Well, so you want to start with 10, and if that's not enough, we'll, we'll get back in here, I guess.
He is an attorney.
Right? So we'll do, uh, we'll do 10 minutes, so we'll be back at 7:36. I make a motion?
Second.
Yes.
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 Do you want that again?
Church, should you hit me on that one?
Okay, so.
No action?
No action. Do a motion to return from executive session, no action.
Okay, I make a motion to return to session, no action?
I second.
Kruger.
Yes.
Beerbauer.
Yes.
Wasn't that?
Yes. All right, executive session, KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B three for county councilor candidate Jacob Velenberg, if I said your name correctly.
Jacob?
Jacob, you're up.
Oh, I forgot to turn mine.
Can't hear you, speak into the microphone.
Well, I had my microphone off.
I didn't know I was called, I'm sorry.
Uh.
Same amount.
So, uh, yeah, let me find my executive session thing here. Forty-three.
To make it fair, you need to get ten minutes.
I don't know, Mr. Bomber, but I was out there running through my head, how fast can I make this? It's at ten, so I'm like, I better get this done in seven, please.
Well, we'll do, we'll start with ten if we need more. We can go back to another one.
We'll talk quick, too. Before we slow down though.
Heard you talk.
Executive session, KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B three for county councilor candidate Jacob Velenberg. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B three to discuss matters relating to employer employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with the representatives of the body or agency. And we will give him ten minutes and we will be back at seven forty-nine.
Oh, you gave me a couple extra seconds.
Oh, wait, I got a motion by you?
Second.
Beerbauer.
Yes.
Wasn't that?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, make a motion at the meeting adjourns? Or, sorry, continues, re-adjourns? My bad. We're gonna come back to open session.
I second meeting back to open session.
It's not a one.
Yeah, it is.
Is it?
Yes.
That's an error with YouTube.
Yes. Okay. Do we want to handle this last deal and then go, go back into? Not, I guess it's.
Um.
Or item.
I'm gonna.
Item C, D, and E.
Make a motion to table those.
Table what?
Those three contracts until.
There's somebody to speak on this?
Yes.
Wesler? Okay.
And, uh, and we need to amend, C has the wrong word in it.
Yeah.
Should be development instead of decommissioning.
Oh, yeah, I want them to be the development agreement.
Either C or E.
Yes.
They're both saying decommission. One says decommissioner.
Well, let's, let's go handle that other issue first.
The titles of them were termination of decommissioning agreement, termination of road use and maintenance agreement, and termination de-commissioning agreement, so that's what it was going off of.
So there's.
Where's he at?
Well, we only have three types of agreements, correct?
I understand, but that's the titles of the pages, so.
Would you like to come to the table and?
Sure, yeah.
Explain these to us? Please and thank you.
Sure.
Hello?
You guys got here soon? A long one. Um, yeah, so there's three agreements, development agreement, decommissioning agreement, the road use and maintenance agreement, also referred to as a RUMA. Uh, I'm here as a representative of Kingbird Solar LLC. Um, the company I work for is called Advance Power. Um, we've been here since twenty twenty-three now. Um, however, we're seeking to terminate these agreements, um, and start fresh and work with the new commission, um, in whatever capacity that takes. Um, and, yeah, I mean, that's, that's it, there's not much.
So, then it was a, it was a decommissioning?
It says it on the title, but when you read down into it, it says development agreement, but I went off of the titles. So.
Okay.
There's three different ones that you have to look at.
I think I slightly looked through them earlier. Any questions, any comments, any discussion? I mean, this is, this is just us signing these and these guys are saying.
And this is just with us, right, just with the county? Any agreements you have with landowners?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is just with the county.
Okay, because I've had that question several times.
October thirty-first with the county, and we're seeking to terminate that. And now, in the future, work with the new commission.
Okay. So start contacting us and talking to us again.
Yep, come present, public interest meetings, take a lot of input, feedback, see if there's changes that can be made to the project and permitting, design, engineering, all sorts of things, so.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Do we?
Make a motion to sign them.
Yeah.
So you want to take them all at once?
Um.
C, D, and E.
Uh, which one has the misprint at the top?
It's, but in the body of.
I know, I know, but I want to read it, I just want to read it.
Um, it's the very first one. Uh, it says pursuant to mutual agreement of the parties to the development agreement.
And all of them has the same, uh, termination clause in it, right?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the last one, it says pursuant to section three point one of the decommissioning agreement. Uh, I think if we look at the copy of that, it's gonna talk about how, you know, that either party can terminate within a certain period of time, I think, I don't know.
I believe it has to be mutual.
Yeah, or mutual, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I think the chairman made a motion to sign them.
Did I? I don't think I did, but I will, let's make.
Oh.
Make a motion to sign, uh, section eight items C, D, and E, the termination of the decommissioning agreement with Kingbird Solar LLC, the termination of the road use and maintenance agreement with Kingbird Solar Energy LLC, and the termination of decommissioner agreement with Kingbird Solar Energy LLC pursuant to section three point one of the decommissioning agreement.
I second.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
Wasn't that?
Yes.
Kruger.
Yes.
We'll facilitate the signing on our end as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
I had a gentleman approach me while you guys were in executive session with Nextera, and he would like for one of you to reach out to him so they can start discussions.
From the last board, you were the solar contact. So are you guys making a motion, make me the solar contact again?
You betcha.
I don't, I don't have a problem doing it, but, I mean.
Can you guys?
Have you not been talking with them?
Can you guys even talk to them with?
The litigation? We probably ought to reach out to the attorney.
Yeah, let's not make them, um, you guys can make the motion and then I'll wait until we hear from.
How about I make a motion, we table this until we have discussed with council?
You don't have to make a motion for anything.
No.
Okay.
Um, you could have your county councilor, once you hire one to do it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, did we want to go in executive session, is that what you were on?
Yes.
You need to make the agenda.
I, I, do I?
No, go ahead.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add a, another executive session, um, under the guidelines of KSA seventy-five, four, one, forty-three, nineteen, B three, to discuss the hiring of one of the three candidates that, uh, have spoken to us over the last two weeks.
And you will return into this room at what time and how long?
Ten minutes and we'll come back at, uh, eight.
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven.
Eight oh seven, yeah.
I'll second.
I was waiting for them seconds to turn up.
Wasn't that?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Beerbauer?
Yes.
But I will take you to columns where it says final cash balance. There is one column and it is the county sheriff's account that is in the negative $10,000 for cash. Because there's not enough cash there, I would have to have a motion for you to move cash to cover the expenses because of accounts payable. In the past, there has been accounts payable that have come in late. And so in the event that more expenses come in, I will need the authority to transfer more money to cover that cash balance shortage. And that will have to come from either the sales tax fund or the general fund.
Which line is that?
It's in the red.
County Sheriff Correctional.
So I will make a motion that we cover that.
I'll second.
What fund?
From...
What was the two funds again?
Jail sales tax or general fund.
And our general fund has the, is the top one, right, on the final cash balance?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion that we just pull it out of the general fund and cover it.
I'll second.
Bear Bauer?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
If you go to the far right column, any of those numbers that are in red means that we didn't hit our target of budgeted carryover. And so those funds actually will start out with lower revenue than was budgeted. So essentially, they just need to cut their budgets by that amount. The funds at that effect are the election fund, which is very scary, road and bridge, landfill, and the sewer repayment, which that one is, I'll explain later as we go through financials. So nothing else to be done for that. If you'll turn to the next page. Every month, you will get this report. It's called a fund status report, or it's your cash. It's all cash available in Bourbon County. Everything that has a red star beside it, you are in control of. So you make decisions based on those funds. Anything else that does not have a red star are generally controlled by the elected official. Fund 052, statutorily, you can transfer the remaining balance in that account to the general fund. And if that's what you wish, I'll need a motion and a second on that. That's generally what we've done in the past.
And so is that, that's what they had left over from this department and the county treasurers?
It's in the motor vehicle fund.
The motor vehicle fund. And we can move that to the general fund?
Yes.
And if we don't move that, she's just got that much extra in that fund?
Mm-hmm. But basically, statutorily, fees, it says fees are to, the commission can take the fees, remaining fees, to go back to the general fund.
And then we just, out of the general fund, didn't we just?
We can put it over one at that point. Move money for the sheriffs, right?
So you didn't move money. You have to move his expenses there.
Right.
So, yeah, I'll make a motion that we move the county treasurer's motor fund of $21,248.89 to the general fund.
I'll second.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Bear Bauer?
Yes.
If you go down the far right-hand column, unencumbered cash, mental health. One of the journal entries I had to do was, we did not have, we did not bring in enough revenue. So basically, there were some outstanding tax payments, so there was delinquent payments. So I had to move the expenses for the rest of the appropriation that was allocated in the 24 budget up to the general fund. That's already been completed. I just wanted to point that out. Mental disability, over the years, there's been money that's just been collected. Next year, I would recommend that you amend the budget to include that $13,000 and go ahead and move it out to them. That's Tri Valley that gets that money. So then therefore, it doesn't keep building up. But that's a 2025 situation. The next page, the NRP county fee fund. There should be 5% setting in there. And that is the responsibility of the appraiser and the treasurer to determine what that 5% amount is. And there has to be a journal entry completed to get money in there. And that has not been done since inception. So, not sure how you want to handle that. But it should be set up so that 95% of the reimbursement gets, is given back to those that have the NRP. And the 5% is for an administration fee, which really needs to go back to the appraiser's office because they are the one administering that program. So something is not set up in the system correctly, and it needs to be corrected.
So what do we need to do to correct it?
The treasurer and the appraiser need to get together and figure that out. It's probably a CIC issue that it's not, just not set up correctly when they're doing those distributions.
Okay, so there's nothing we can do?
There's nothing you guys can do. I just, in warning, I'm just telling you that there's...
Well, we can, we can follow up on it later to make sure they did it.
Yes, yes. Emergency services, sales tax. I talked about this, I think, last time where there was a wrong distribution. I have corrected all that. So this is the December distribution. And according to the agreement with Freeman, as we receive that, we have to turn around and give that to them, 100% of it. So those funds will be distributed in January. We'll just do that every month. That'll just be an ongoing thing.
And they have to go to the state and then send back to us in check form, correct?
No.
That's how I was explaining.
What do you mean? What has to go to the state? The sales tax?
This $58,000 has to go to the state, and then they cut us a check to send.
No. This $58,000 is coming from the state as sales tax. And then we send a check to Freeman. That's how the agreement reads.
So every time the state sends us a check, then we send one to them?
Yes. Yep. Yeah.
Isn't that in conflict with the ballot question?
I felt like it was. But when the agreement was written, it was written that all funds would go to them. So...
But it's in conflict with what we agreed to when we voted on the sales tax?
Yes, I feel like that.
Until, until they open the emergency room, they shouldn't be receiving those funds. Per, per the ballot.
Yeah, I agree.
Because we haven't seen a signed Freeman agreement yet.
Yeah.
I spoke with Freeman. They mailed out the signed contract, signed with, by Jim Harrison, by Brad Macken, and the hospital staff. They mailed it out on Monday. I'm assuming the mail didn't run today, so it'll probably be here tomorrow. But I do have a, on my commissioner phone, I do have a copy of that signed agreement. So that, that much is done.
So how are we going to handle the discrepancy between what we voted on and what we collected?
It probably should have been discussed when that MOU was presented, in that contract. But that contract's now signed by all parties. So moving forward, if you go to page three of this document, you'll see kind of a line. And this is where, in the past, there have been statements made that we have all this money. And down to that line is essentially the money that the commission and the elected officials control. Everything below this line are called agency funds, and you will learn this as you go through the audits. These agency funds are holding funds for tax distributions. And so when it says we have $18 million, for example, on this report, $14 million of it is distribution funds that will get distributed out to the taxing bodies. So we don't really have $18 million. You would have to add up everything down to that line to tell you exactly how much you have to work with for budgets. So I just wanted to point that out. So this is your cash report. There really isn't anything else that needs to be discussed there. Each month, you're going to receive that report and this next report. And if there's anything that you have questions about, you can ask for detail, and I can print out detail by line item. But I will not be printing these out every month. I will be sending them by email to Save On Paper. There's no reason to, to be killing trees. If you look on page two of this document, the county commission budget is over $9,000. The county clerk's budget is over by $5,000. You jump down to page three. The counting coroner is over $32,000 from what we budgeted. Page four, and I'm just pointing out the ones that are over budget. Page four is the juvenile detention. It's over $7,000. And then the courthouse general is over $9,000. So...
Juvenile detention, is that the bed that we hold in?
Yeah, and... Yeah, so that's gone up. So we, we had a juvenile, I know, all year, so that's, that's probably why that cost exceeded. For the 2025 budget, it's generally, the estimate is sent to the commission. I never received that. So we probably, once you guys get, you guys will have to, at one of these meetings, you're going to have to set up who's on that board. I don't think we, the past commissioners ever attended those board meetings. And so it's very important that we understand what the cost has gone up to, because we may need to make some adjustments to the 25 budget. But you have, at the very end, $541,000 left in your budget remaining. And if we looked at the cash balance, there was 500 and, actually, there was 510. So you wouldn't even have been able to spend all your budget anyway. But why you have so much left over is because every department that I didn't list off held the line. They, they made sure that they didn't overspend. They didn't, so they basically gave back to the county stating, hey, we can make it work. And back in October, November, I sent out a message to them, because I could see the writing on the wall that things were going to be tight. And so, you know, you need to reach out to those departments and say thank you because they're the ones that are truly trying to make a difference and, and only spend what they have to. So that's the general fund. If you'll flip over to the appraisers fund, we have a budget violation. And so I need approval to move $4,830 to the general fund because of this violation. Because it can't stay as is, or you're going to have a audit violation.
And so what's, what's the mess up from?
The $30,000 that we found in the NRP.
And that's all we was over?
We were over $4,830. So I would just do an even five, just to give you some cushion.
And so we need to take...
I'm basically going to reallocate an expense from the appraiser fund to the general fund.
Oh, you're going to go from the appraiser to the general fund?
Mm-hmm. Of $5,000.
$5,000.
Because we're over budget.
So you're just moving the expense?
Mm-hmm. And what probably caused that? Because when we were looking at interview, when I was projecting to see if we had a budget amendment, what caused that is the accrual, the one-week accrual that we have to do for payroll. And so that's what caused this.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we move the expense from the appraiser's office of $4,830. Well, I just make a motion that we move $5,000. A $5,000 expense from the appraisers to the general fund.
I'll second.
Kruger?
Yes.
Bear Bauer?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
If you will turn to page 120. Or sorry, 37, Fund 120. This is the last one we'll go through.
Is this the last one that's got red ink on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
One thing that you will learn as we go through budgets is a budget can be exceeded by the amount of reimbursements that you get back. So, for example, in the case of the sheriff's budget, which is the one we're looking at, he was over budget by $138,115. But he can exceed his budget by the reimbursables, which are up above that, and his reimbursement for housing. So in essence, we're going to have to move some of these expenses back to the general fund because there's, we've exceeded it too much. So the 138 includes that 59 and 772. So the only thing I can exceed his budget by is his $125,000. So you're going to have to move the remaining expenses to the general fund.
The 59 and the 772?
Whatever the difference is between the 125 and the 138, so...
Oh.
Yeah, so about 10. You probably ought to give yourself some cushion. I would do 20 grand because inevitably, we get bills that roll in this last week, and I have to encumber them.
Right. You said you ought, we ought to roll over how much?
20.
20.
So his total expenditures went over?
Mm-hmm.
By, by, yeah.
It's actually...
138, 115, 62?
Yep.
Okay.
Now you can move it to the general fund, or you can make up for that. And remember, you've already done the 10K. So this will be a total of 30. You can do it from the sales tax fund, or you can do it from the general fund.
How much does that leave us in our general fund?
13.
Because we've done how much in the general fund now?
It's probably going to knock it down. About 70, I would say. 20, 30, 5, 40. But you're going to make up 20 when you move the revenue from the, you're probably going to be at about 30,000 that you're taking out of the general fund.
Even after we move this?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think we need to move 20,000 over? Cover any extras that might still come in?
Yep.
And I'll make a motion to move 20,000 to the general fund to cover the overages of the sheriff's apartment.
I second.
Bear Bauer?
Yes.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
If you want more, if you need more questions answered, please feel free to come by my office, and I'll explain this in more detail. But this will be the reports that you get each month.
By email, correct?
Huh?
By email.
By email.
Can I ask Commissioner Kruger a question? In the return of the funds agreement with Freeman, where they, if they don't do anything, they have to pay us back in six easy payments, does that include the sales tax funds as well?
Yes. Basically, the way I understand it to be set up, they will get the funds, and then they will have 30 days from receipt of the funds to give us an expenditure sheet that shows us where they're, where they're spending the money on the hospital. And that will be done every month, along with every, every payment.
I think by that audit group, they're the ones that are going to look at that.
Yeah, but...
Who's going to determine whether they did anything or not?
We have, we have the same counsel from our group, from the last commission, the citizens group, they're still overseeing that. And then they're basically getting back to us and doing the oversight on it, if that answers your question.
Or asking my question properly?
Okay.
The clause act that says, Freeman says if we don't do anything, then we'll give you all the money that you, you've paid us in six easy payments.
That's, that's the way I understand it, yes.
So that includes the sales tax fund and the 1.1 million?
Yes, that's how I understand it, yes.
So who's going to determine whether we get to the point that they haven't done anything?
Well, right now, i- isn't the forecast June for them to be in the moving?
I know that they're already spending that money. They're already doing work out there on the hospital. They're already bringing in equipment. But to answer your question, that, that board will oversee it, and then they will bring any concerns to us. And they'll also be coming in here, I believe, once a month and, and basically giving us the rundown on everything that's happening.
But we're not as paid as we're due, right? I mean, just because they're working out there now, and we don't end up with anything. It's the end result that we end up with that we're going to end up paying for.
If we, yeah, if we, anytime that we don't think that they're proceeding, we can withhold payment.
We, it says we pay 100% of the sales tax in the agreement.
Well, I hope you have, in the agreement, I can resolve myself with that. But if we end up with nothing, do we get it all back?
Yes.
Yes.
So at some point, somebody's got to make a decision whether it's June 1st, if I think that has a six-month extension, and if everything's going in good faith. At some point, somebody's got to make a decision. Nothing happened. Whether they worked out there and spent a million dollars, we're going to, somebody's got to make a determination that nothing happened.
Correct.
Is that all our financials? Commissioner comments?
Oh, I will, once I get these fixed, I will have to publish in the paper. It's, it's part of the requirement of the, the board, the commissioner, or the clerk and the treasurers. So I would ask permission to, as I finish things up, to allow you to sign off on the financials, and then I'll present them. Because we have to have it done by the 25th of this month.
Okay.
In the paper. I have to publish it in the paper.
So when do we need, when?
Part by law.
When do we need to agree, agree to have me sign?
They just need to allow you to sign it, knowing that it's going to be published. I'm waiting on, I'm waiting on banks, bank people to do their bank reconciliations, so...
Okay.
Till that's done, I can finalize.
So you need that motion now to let me sign that?
Yeah, as, I mean, we, what's next meeting? What's, what's next? 27, 27? We'll have time. We'll just, no, we won't. Because the paper, you... Maybe, if we, maybe if they did it on Wednesday, that's pushing it.
So you need the motion now to let me sign whatever you need me to sign?
I make a motion to have the chairman sign to get this reconciled.
I'll second.
Wizzenhut?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Kruger?
Yes.
Now, Commissioner comments?
I went first last time, so let's...
Well, what I was going to address during the comments, we've kind of already let the cat out of the bag, and, and we've already spoke on it. I met with Freeman last Friday. They had their first board meeting out there at the hospital. All the contracts are signed and in the mail. I do have a signed copy that I received through email. Everything is a go out there, and they're excited to be here, and work is underway. And I don't really know what the mention last week was of extra funds. I'm going to assume it's what Mr. Hoyt mentioned. But other than the, the, the tax money, there is no extra funds to be added. So that's all I got.
My turn. Okay. I've received contact from the Southwind Extension Office, and they have a concern regarding some movement of offices here in the courthouse. And they advised that they have a written agreement, and that it's renewed annually in July. Do we have copies of this written agreement? They said they have a copy that they'd be willing to provide. Anyway, I'd say we, we need to, we need to review that. Do we have a plan of moving this office?
We offered them the big office over there.
Right.
Because they were complaining about space.
Okay. They, they, I mean, what, they told me is that they've been in that office for well over 60 years, and that they like it there. And they, they would prefer not to move that, that...
We don't really care if they move. We offered them the space because it's almost triple the space.
Okay.
Because they've complained for years they don't have enough room.
Okay. Then somewhere, the wires got mixed up, because...
Well, there was an issue that we're going to handle tomorrow night that caused this problem. Leroy and I and Susan are going to meet with someone that's caused this problem.
Okay.
There is no issue.
Okay.
It's a fabricated issue, and we'll handle it.
Okay. Then I, I mean, I think that this board, which should be kept, kept appraised of that, then, and find out before we make any, any decisions. Because I, I would love to, I mean, within the building over there, what I was advised is that it has roof problems?
We're putting our new roof on it.
Well, so we are putting on a new roof? Okay. And who's in the building now besides driver's license?
Probation, state probation.
And are they staying there, or are they moving to? Are they moving to, they're not moving?
The software company that was in there for free for the last five years is gone.
Okay. I didn't know if states were moving uptown to their new building or not.
No, because that's a different kind of state office.
Okay. All right. I just, I mean, they brought this concern to me, so I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, according to what they were telling me, was that they were not given much opportunity or choice in the matter.
That's not how it happened at all, so...
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Okay. So I got a little statement. I might ask for forgiveness, I guess. This commission is new, and we will stumble, but we will find our feet. We ask for a short grace period as we find our rhythm to lead this county in... We ask for a short grace period as we find our rhythm to lead this county into the future. We've gotten training, and will continue to further our education. I ask the public if you disagree with the decision we've made. We ask that you contact us directly, so we can explain why we did what we did. And, um, everybody who's been contacting me so far, you know that if I don't answer the phone, I'm quick to call back or get back to you as quick as possible. Um, I apologize for delays. I do have a day job or a night job. But just give us a little bit of time is all we ask, because we will find a rhythm, and I promise we will help lead this county into the future and make it better for everyone.
I want to commend you all for attending that conference. Previous commissions didn't attend when it was just in Pittsburgh, moving all the way to Chicago.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Kruger?
Yes.